Meeting of June 5th, 2017 order. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pagers, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion with the addition on the consent agenda of temporary malt on sale permit for the dam festival and the dam-to-dam bike ride permit. And did we want to add the garbage under old business or new?
Old business.
Very, very old.
Is it grandpa business? So, under old business B, garbage contract? Did you want to add cans on there too?
Might as well.
Can purchase? Anything else we needed for an addition? Not with swish of the council with the amended agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the added items.
I'll second.
Got a motion by councilmember Gushak, second by councilmember Knopfela to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes for the special work session, May 15th, 2017, and the regular city council meeting of May 15th, 2017. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Wildergrin, second by councilmember Lundberg to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Checks number 96424 through 96523 totaling $545,036.51. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve the bills.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Knopfela, second by councilmember Hanson to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, presentation gift, Le Bourget, France, Sister City.
On behalf of the Low Falls Sister City and the delegation that just returned from France, we thank you for some ti- for the time this evening on your agenda. This year, we mark two important anniversaries. First, it's the 90th anniversary of Lindbergh's historic flight across the Atlantic. And second is the 30th anniversary of our Sister City relationship with Le Bourget, France. This year, we brought a delegation of folks from Charles Lindbergh's boyhood home. And I'd like to take just a moment to introduce you to members of the delegation who are here this evening. First, we have Gary and Deborah Boltnick, if you'd stand. Next, we have Gary and Joanne Dahl. Not with us this evening are Jim and Deanna Giehat. Arlene Hausman is also not able to be with us this evening. But we do have Kathy Hartle and Doug Larson. Also with us is Karen Johnson. Her husband, Tim, was also along on the journey, but he wasn't able to join us this evening. Joyce Kamrowski was also along on the trip, but not able to be here. Neither are Kurt and Ann Owen. But Melissa Peterson is another member of the delegation who was with us. Tom Stoy and Bridget Fitzgerald were along. They weren't able to be here. And Linda Weiss and her husband, Jim, were members of the delegation. And the last two were myself and my husband, Phil. So these were the folks that were representing in Little Falls over in Le Bourget. At the sister or at the city-to-city meeting where there's a chance for the city delegations to talk, it was pointed out how important in this day and age relationships between two cities are. In days where we get news out of Manchester, which happened while we were over there, or out of London like we get these days, it's really important for us to build the bridges of understanding and tolerance between people of other countries. Both the words that Mayor Zilka had sent along, as well as the words from the Le Bourget mayor, Monsieur Vincent Capocavalaris, and he's not here to tell me I pronounced that wrong. But they both echoed the importance of these relationships going on. At that meeting, we received a gift for the city. I'll hold it up. It's a very beautiful glass plaque commemorating the 30th anniversary. And we also received a little booklet you can look through. You might need your glasses on if your eyes are like mine. And you'll notice, you'll recognize some of the folks over the 30 years that have participated in this. So, on behalf of the Sister City, we thank you so much.
Do we need a motion to accept that, or will that be on our regular donations?
I can include it on the donations.
Thank you. Consent agenda. The Community Services Advisory Board minutes from March 2017 received. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, March and April 2017 received. Parade Dance and Temporary Road Closing Permit, Dam Festival Approved. Paying Agency Agreement, Northland Trust Services Bond 2017B Authorized. Police Department Report, April 2017 Received. Seasonal Summer Laborers, Daniel Palmer and William Winkelman, 4th. Parks and Street Department Authorized. Solicitor's License, Charter Communication Spectrum, 1 Year Approved. Solicitor's License, Clearpoint Construction, 1 Year Approved. Solicitor's License, J.M. Schommer Incorporated, 1 Year Approved. Source Water Protection Grant Application, Denial Letter Received. Temporary Sidewalk Display and Promotion Permit, Babies on Broadway Approved. Temporary Sidewalk Display and Promotion Permit, Bonjos Approved. Waiver of Liability Limits, Legal Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Deny. Temporary Malt On Sale License for Dam Festival Approved. And Dam-to-Dam Bike Ride Permit Approved. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We receive, approve, authorize, and deny the items from the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Knopfela to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none.
According to what he said, I'm having a little trouble. What am I denying? What am I approving? Just deny items that are listed as denying.
Yeah.
Yes.
As they mark.
We're denying the waiver of liability limits.
We do not want to deny, the denial is, we do not want to waive our liability limits.
Otherwise, it sounds like we're doing all of them for every item. I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries public hearings and lettings. Under lettings, appliance and bulk garbage pickup, Bob Lemire Roll Off Refuge and Recycling award. Laurie?
Yes, we requested quotes for our fall or summer appliance and bulk garbage pickup. We did request quotes from City Sanitarium, Bob Lemire Roll Offs, Refuge, and Recycling. Lemire's were the only one to submit a bid on this. The bid is based on a dollar amount per item, although the actual amount we pay will differ depending on what is actually picked up. Customers are the, the residents have to register for their items ahead of time. We then send the list and then we pay based on what is actually picked up. So we're asking the council then to award the appliance and bulk garbage collection to Bob Lemire Roll Offs, Refuge, and Recycling. We will use money from the SCORE grant to pay for that.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Gushak, second by councilmember Wildergrin to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries HVAC Climate Control, Carnegie Library Climate Award. Greg?
Back in 1999, the Carnegie Library was expanded and renovated. We've had issues with the library in different forms ever since then. Over the last three years that I've been here, we've had issues trying to keep the temperature of the library at a constant temperature. Whether it's the boiler or whether it's the air conditioning has been kind of going out of whack. And so, I reached out to some of the folks that I previously worked with just to get some recommendations on who would be a good person, good contact, to try to get that boiler system and AC system running the way it's supposed to be. And climate control is the, the individuals that, or excuse me, climate makers is the individuals that, that was recommended. And so, I reached out to them to take a look at our, at our system. Essentially, what they're going to look at doing is inventory and monitoring the, the library system and tuning up the pneumatics. It's all run on air. And so, when, when what heat is needed or air is needed somewhere, it's, it's an air sensor that's given back to a control panel. They're going to update all that, tune up all of that, and then see if there's any other needed equipment or changes that need to be made to the system in order to make that properly functioning HVAC. So we are recommending approval tonight in the amount of $5,500 from climate makers out of Jenkins to tune up the HVAC at the library. That would be charged to the equipment fund.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by councilmember Lundberg to approve. Any discussion?
We've attempted this numerous times before. I've been on the library board for many years and it's never been resolved. Do you have faith it's going to be resolved this time?
I do. After speaking with, with climate makers, in the half an hour that I talked to them, they gave me more information about that system than the ones that we have starting up the, the system spring and fall. So, over the last three years. So I, I feel comfortable that they'll be able to diagnose it and get it working properly.
That's what we need.
Yep.
So with that being said, they're going to come in, take a look at it, and then give recommendations on another 40 grand that needs to be installed?
I don't think it'll be that much.
35?
No, probably not.
Just seems like it's an ever-ending battle with, we're authorizing and approving all this stuff and then it's change order after change order after change order. And stuff like this isn't bid, it's just we solicit one vendor for?
For this one, yes.
Yep. Well, there's three or four of them in here tonight again that are just soliciting bids instead of going out for bids, so.
Well, in 99, when they went out for bids to renovate the library, they got the lowest quote and we've been dealing with it since 1999. So in that case-
So climate makers has been working on it since 99 and hasn't got it solved?
Climate makers hasn't been at, in the library yet.
It's been a headache there. We've had frozen pipes which caused damage. We've had a lot of issues. Needs to be resolved.
Correct.
And this is a company that you're familiar with, that you've worked with in the past?
I haven't worked with. Other peers that I've, that I've reached out to that deal with HVAC recommended them. So I feel confident that they will do a good job for us.
Nobody locally was able to help the system?
Not with pneumatics.
Our local taxpayers?
Even with our current, with the current system, it's air, it's pneumatic, so it's not like electrical programmable thermostat. There's very few contractors that deal with that. There's one out of St. Cloud that we've been using to do currently to inspect it. But like I said, I've learned more from climate makers in the 30 minutes I met with them than I have in the three years starting it up and shutting it down with our current contractor.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries painting Rosenmeyer House, Gruber Custom Painting Award.
Yeah, if you recall, in our 2017 budget, we looked at upgrading or repairing and painting the Rosenmeyer House. Originally, we were going to look at getting grants to investigate whether or not it's more cost-effective to paint it or, and rehab it versus modern, modern boards and modern exterior equipment for it. Unfortunately, we were not awarded that, that grant. So we are looking at going out and actually painting and repairing the, the siding on the Rosenmeyer House. There's a number of areas where it's rotten. There's holes in it. You can actually see the insulation on the inside. So we are looking at painting it. This quote is just for painting it. We'll, when they get it scraped, we'll actually come back and have some of those boards replaced. So we will have a price for that coming up here as well. I got a quote from Gruber Custom Painting out of Piers in the amount of $26,300. I reached out to Gary's Painting out of Brainerd. They gave us a budget quote of $40,000 to do that work, but they said they were booked up all the way until October. So they didn't really want to give us a price knowing that October is, is quite a ways away and it's, who knows if you're going to be able to get anything in there. So we did go with, or we are recommending approving this, this quote from Gruber Custom Painting in the amount of $26,300, and that would be charged to the Rosenmeyer Fund.
This is another one I just got. Requested two quotes and one guy says he can't do it and the other one, we're just taking his bid. And this is another out of town or?
True.
There's nobody in town in Little Falls that does house painting?
I'm looking for recommendations all the time.
Don't we have the paper that we use for our, to put out requests for bids?
Gruber was the only one that was in the paper in terms of the services. In the service section of the Morrison County Record.
We have a house a little bigger than the Rosenmeyer House, and we had it painted five years ago and it was $30,000.
Yeah, well, this is 23.
Yeah, but it's a smaller house and it's six years later. That said, we painted it five years ago and it's going to get painted again this summer. That paint job is only going to last five or six years and then we're going to put another $26,000 into it. And then in five years, another $26,000. Wouldn't it be better to go with the other thing that we don't, even though we didn't get the grant money? And then you, so then you pay $75,000, but you only pay it once and you don't have to do anything every five years then to it.
If you want, we can research how much it's going to cost to re-site it with modern technology. The, the flip side of that is, you know, the national register component of it.
Yeah. You don't want to put vinyl on it, but you can put some kind of composite that really does look like wood.
True, true, true. We would, we would be looking at something such as that would keep the, the look to it. I don't know how the Historical Society would, would view that. I don't know that answer. But we can, if you want, we can explore that option.
Does that include the porch?
The 26.3, yes.
Okay. About the painting of the porch, I don't like that light blue with the green.
Correct.
Gray, it's awful.
The, the light blue was supposed to be a-
Whose idea was that?
It was supposed to be battleship gray.
Yes, it's gray.
And we, we had it painted on the day of caring. It turned into a blue instead of a battleship gray.
That needs to be adjusted.
It would be repainted to gray.
It should be red. Or dark brown.
What is the wish of the council? Have a motion?
I'm making a motion that he checks further in what the cost would be if we actually fixed up the siding the way it should be.
So you want it tabled?
I want it tabled.
Motion to table?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to table.
I'll second.
Got a motion by councilmember Gushak, second by councilmember Lundberg to table. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries re-roof Fire Hall Main Station, Herzog Roofing Board. Greg?
Yeah, over at the Fire Hall, the East Fire Hall there, the, in the mid-'80s, that was, was re-roofed. We got pricing to re-roof that again. When I went up on the roof to, to look at what the issue was, they were experiencing some, some water damage between the, the high roof and the low roof. There was about a three-quarter inch gap between the, the cleat that holds it onto the wall and the actual rubber membrane roofing. So whenever we got a rain that was coming from, from the north, it would hit that wall, come down, and get in between the brick and the, the rubber roofing. We got pricing from Herzog Roofing as well as Roof R, Roof 1 RBR out of Freeport. Herzog is the low quote in the, in the amount of $33,500. So tonight, we are recommending approval to be charged to the equipment fund in the amount of $33,500.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by councilman Hanson to approve. Any discussion?
Well, I'm just, this is the same subject with, you know, two, two bids here in-
Water stop, they've done, been doing, they've been our little bid and we didn't even request the quote from them?
We got a price for them just to patch it, but they didn't give us a price to, to do the entire roof.
Did we ask them for a quote?
We did.
Can, it seems to me that the ones that provide a quote, see, I mean, are we looked at like an ATM? I mean, I'm getting the feeling that whenever we need something done, I mean, $30,000 for paint jobs and $5,500 just to tell us what's wrong with the HVAC system? I mean, I, I know they're bigger. Don't get me wrong, but, I mean, a homeowner would never tolerate that. They'd keep looking.
The HVAC system for us, and it has 14 different thermostats controlling the building. So it's pretty complex. This, the size of the roof is quite complex. When we compared the police department, that was $70,000 and we did the roof over there and I can't remember what this one was. Was it $90,000? That sound right, Laurie? City Hall?
I don't recall. I don't.
Well, no, Water Stop beat Herzog and those two.
I thought it was 35 each.
True, true.
So now Herzog's blow one here, so would Water Stop? I can't believe that they want to bid on it, but-
They wouldn't, they didn't even give us a price.
Where's Water Stop from?
From Little Falls here.
Okay. And Herzog, it says St. Cloud, but it's the same entity.
They do have an office here in Little Falls, same entity, yes.
And as far as painting, you can't find anyone that even wants to paint a house like that. So that's why the bids on that is so expensive.
There's a lot of manual scraping on that house, or there will be.
So just back, so did the whole process change as far as doing requests for quotes versus just soliciting ads all the time or soliciting bids? Wasn't it always just put out requests for quotes?
Depending on the, the dollar amount. Originally, we were looking at just patching it and then when we, when we met with the, the companies, they said, you know what, you're, you're close to the end of life on this, this roof anyways. You might want to consider re-roofing it. So then we dug in to see when it was actually re-roofed, found out that it was the mid-'80s. And yeah, it made sense to, to get a price to, to re-roof it at that point.
We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoloys, same sign. Motion carries. Stonewall Repair, Matt Rousch, Pine Grove Park and Zoo Award.
Over the last number of years, we've been doing work on the Pine Grove Wall, little by little. First, it started with the, the columns by the, the ends of the wall. Then we were started to do the tuck pointing on the wall on the, the far west end, kind of working towards the east. The east end, right in front of the zoo, is the worst section of it. That's the, the section that's actually tilted towards the zoo. And so, we started in, I think it was 2013 or something like that when we started working on that wall. We started with $10,000 every year towards, putting towards that wall. This year, we budgeted $30,000 because we knew it was going to be much more expensive because the wall is tilted. As much as it is, you're not going to be able to just tuck. You've got to straighten it before you even do any work on it. Looking at the individuals to, to do the work with that, I reached out to, to Matt Rousch out of Little Falls to, to do the tuck pointing on it. We got a price of $70 per hour to do that work. Tonight, we are recommending approval up to $20,000 to do the tuck pointing and stone repair on that section. That still leaves about $10,000 for the city to straighten that wall up to get that, to get that ready for the tuck pointing and stone repair. That would be charged to the Park Improvement Fund.
What's the wish of the council on this one?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Wildergrin for approval? Discussion?
What happened to Rim Masonry?
We had Rim do the, the work last two years. He did okay job. I mean, it was, it was good. He was pretty speedy on it. But Rim Masonry is more geared towards, their niche is more flatwork, so concrete sidewalks, driveways and such. They did do, like I said, a good job on the last two sections. They were more expensive than, than Matt Rousch. And so that's why tonight, we're looking at recommending Matt.
Was Pat? Did we inquire with Pat on his capacity?
We did not. Going through the years, Pat started with it and then we went to, to Rim. Rim was faster than, than Pat. Rim was more expensive, but they also had more guys in it. And then we looked at, we're looking at Matt Rousch this year. Matt is less expensive, but has about the same number of guys for, for that repair. So we're looking at getting farther with, with the money.
Any other discussion?
Yes, $70 an hour for all the workers he has.
How many?
It'll be him and another guy that, that'll be working on it.
So they're 70 bucks an hour a piece, so it's $100.
No, $70 for, for the crew.
There needs to be some kind of stipulation laid out there. I used to be a stonemason. You could drag out a job if you pay them per hour and really milk that thing. You need something in place where he's expected to do so much in a certain amount of time.
And we'll, we'll watch him. I mean, that's, we did that with all three of them. We watch him and if they, if they're not, we'll stop them and this is the end of where your, your contract is at. We don't have to spend the full $20,000 on one contractor. If they're dragging their feet, then we will stop them at that point in time.
Kind of like if they bid the job. That's the way I used to do it.
It's tough. I mean, with, with-
It's done all the time in the cities. You don't pay somebody 70 bucks an hour and leave it open-ended because like I say, you can drag that out. They can come close to bidding it pretty accurate and there's always that adjustment. If it does, they run into unforeseeable problems, they can go up to a certain percentage and add it on. I would feel more comfortable with something like that than leaving it open-ended.
I know ever since we started working on that wall, even with Jerry around, it was per hour that, that's the way that they've done it. So I kind of kept that same process, looking at it. And I'll be honest, I feel the, the same way as Jerry did. It's tough to bid something like that because you don't know how much, you don't know how much material they're going to pull out of it. That's, that's why we do it per hour.
If they're doing it, you know, a full reconstruction, they know how much material is involved. And if, and in tuck pointing, there isn't that much material, you know, you pull out the joints and stick in. You can tell what you have into it. So I'm kind of having trouble understanding this, that you have to leave it open-ended, but it's not only my choice.
Well, the thing is, we've paid $4,000 to Rim Masonry the last seven years and all of a sudden, we're going to give $20,000 to some guy that's never done work for the city before? We're just going to, here you go, that's five times the amount of the wall. Is there five times the wall left?
There's about half of the wall is left. And the bulk of it is because, the bulk of the reason we increased it to 30,000 this year is because of the, the tilt of the wall. Because we're going to have to pull that wall up to get it straight. And undoubtedly, we will do damage to that wall when we, when we straighten it out. I mean, there's just no getting around that. And I can't say how much damage we're going to do to it when we straighten that out. Because right now, it's probably at about a 20-degree angle and it needs to be straightened.
What it needs is a new footing.
I thought we would possibly be able to do that, but looking at it further, in order to do that, you're going to have to completely dismantle that wall. You'll never get the, the rocks back in the same spot or get the same look that they had. It was put up by the WPA, so there is some historical value, even though it's not on the historical register. I still want to be able to keep that, that look and that, that, you know, historical property to it.
Even that's possible, though.
What's that? Taking it apart and moving it?
I ran a crew of kids. We redid Sebelin Pike's monument. We took each stone, we photographed and everything. It went back together looking just like it did. It went back together looking just like it did.
I can guarantee it's going to be more than that $20,000 then.
That's going to take a lot more time if you're charging.
How much is it to push it the rest of the way over and haul it away?
Leave the pillars up on the corners to be done with it.
It was a make, make work job to begin with, back in the 30s, right?
Yeah, but they did a great job on it.
So as far as, you know, Frank was considering about, you know, how much work gets done, based on, on what the guys did last year, the, the amount of distance that, that they covered within their price range. I mean, can you make that a prerequisite for like Matt that, okay, based on this, you should be able to accomplish this many feet of wall for this amount of money? So that you're not going over milking this, milking the...
To me, it should be out on bids like it's been every other year. And all of a sudden, we're handing to one guy that we requested a quote from for $70 bucks an hour.
Well, this one wasn't, wasn't out for bids before.
Rim Masonry?
Correct.
Aren't they willing to do all of our sidewalks and everything?
Not, not the Stonewall Repair. The Stonewall Repair was always quoted out.
And you're not, you don't have to spend the $20,000, right? It's up to and not to go over that.
It's up to.
And when you do straighten it your way, it's still going to shift all them stones.
Like I said, once we straighten it, it's going to damage, it's going to, it's going to shift and damage that wall.
Tuck pointing at that point is moot. It's, you're not going to have the same stable wall. It's just the way it is. Everything's going to shift. Uh, stone walls are actually mortared in from the backside. It's just not filling in the cracks. That's not the stability. The stability comes from what's behind it. And if that all shifts, you're just putting a cosmetic fix on it.
And it's all shifted already. I mean, if you look at that wall, there's quite a, quite a bit of it that's tipped over, like I said, 20 degrees already. So that shift has already, already occurred in there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A poise, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Excuse me, Gushick and Hanfler were the nays?
Yep.
Thank you.
Old business, change order number three, Eagle Construction.
Change order number three in front of you has all of the, uh, should say most of the changes that we've had over at the water treatment plant. You can see there's a number of items in there pertaining to, uh, replacing the nozzles because there was some, when they built it back in '74, they had a hatch that was up higher. And so we had to change kind of how, how long the nozzles were in the, in the filter areas. Um, there are things such as the bubble level, uh, bubble leveler in the clear wells to see how much water we have in the storage tanks, changing that over to modern technology to work with our system. Um, we've got in there fittings that were corroded. We needed to replace those. Um, looking at the, the walkway at the railing, we found out during this construction that the railing was actually just tack welded instead of fully welded like it was, should have been. So we've got to add in there for that. Looking at, uh, selenoid valves, again, when the backwash pump was put in, it wasn't put in to meet, you know, the, the current standards for today for the electricals. So we had to do some, some rework on that. And the last one was the, um, the drain valves on the outlet end of the filter cells, they wouldn't seal 100%. And so they had to constantly fight water in order to get the, the work done, uh, in that filter. And then we do have a deduct in there, uh, for removing and replacing some, uh, some conduits in the plant. Plant is basically 99% done. There's touch-up work that they've got left to, to do on it. This change order here is in the amount of $9,885. When you take this into account with all of the other change orders and such, it's less than a 1% in terms of increases to the project. Um, so overall, this was, this was definitely a, a good project that we've had with, with Eagle. So we are recommending approval tonight of change order number, I think it says two, three, in the amount of $9,885 to Eagle Construction.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to approve it.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Approve change order number three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A poise, same sign. Motion carries. Garbage contract.
From the last meeting, uh, our last work session, we had direction from the council to renegotiate with the, with the haulers and try to come to an agreement today. Um, I do have agreement signed from two of them, uh, for the territories and a 10-year contract. The other had some issues with, uh, with the terms and, um, how the numbers were split. I think we are close to having that, that agreement in place. And I think at this point, I will let the council, um, offer their opinions to the matter.
So Bob, what, did you decide, did you, were you willing to sign or, yep? With, if, with the removal of that stipulation on invading a territory?
What else I'd want you to know is that we never saw this contract until today at 3 o'clock. And they saw it way before that because they even have input from their lawyer on 3 o'clock we saw this contract.
John, is that, the other ones had it way before?
No, the other ones had it on, uh, actually this, today as well, for the, the last pieces, the changes. The, the pieces that we took out were based on discussion either that we've, we had or the count, that the, that the mayor had. The contract that was printed today with that input is, was printed and they had seen in writing today. Uh, the one piece from the letters, the attorney letter, they alluded that it was out there and I requested that, I seen it, I could see it. It was delivered to me last week on Thursday. So that's, that's the point at which I had the pieces of input and that was based, you know, um, City Sanitary, Greg Burgart and I had a conversation that Thursday. So these pieces of information are, are from between Thursday and today and the con, written contracts were in their hands today.
So with that change that you guys earlier alluded to that you would accept to removal of the contract? Okay. So basically, we got three contracts.
Which we haven't seen. So how do we vote on?
Right.
A contract that they first didn't agree to and then now we're doing verbal agreements? And how do we vote on something that we haven't seen?
I can pull it up right now.
And then it's going to be rewritten in front of us, um, or piecemealed?
No, the, the pieces, that, that piece was, is taken out.
A full contract, we, we can look at it? I mean...
It's, it's in, you can, you can pull it up. I put, added it to the special, the, the meetings folder. I will pull it up right now so that we can go through it. It's, uh, solid waste agreement updated. Sorry, hold on one sec.
I'm serious.
It was with one can size.
So it's on our desktop?
Yep, so it's in that, it's in the meetings folder and it's the one dated today. So a lot of this is, is boilerplate or from the previous agreement. There's, the 2026 date was, is included from the start of this contract. If we, if we want to make it a full 10 years, we can, we can amend that. Um, so anywhere in here that you don't see a, a highlighted area, um, it's not, so there hasn't been a significant change since that last meeting, so. We did include example of day and carrying. We were talking about that as a special collection pickup just to, um, as potential for including in the contract that was been removed. We'll just proceed, um, as a propose, asking for proposals for that day, uh, in later times. We added a clarification on yard waste, that yard waste that cannot be included in, in the pickup. Um, that'll be included in, also in our, alongside our ordinances. Wanted to ensure that if there's a opportunity for residents, if they have, um, excess garbage or, uh, need for like a dumpster or roll-off, that they do that separately from the city, that they negotiate directly with the haulers for, for that. Um, that, that's, that's something that the city, just for clarity, that the city wouldn't be dealing with for them. Um, and then if they have excess collection, we will have a means that they, they will be comp, the haulers will be compensated for. Either we're going to place it in the bags, uh, a bag system that we currently have, or people can buy a tag from us that will pay for that additional weight because there's an assumed weight limit in both the 32-gallon cart and the 64-gallon cart. The red line here that, um, it says that meets industry standards is, was from the attorney, that they just wanted to ensure that we weren't going to go and buy the cheapest cart that didn't, uh, didn't meet the ability to pick it up with the, the new system. However, we have, the carts that we're proposing are one of the best on the market.
Let me help you find it.
Yeah, read it up there.
We have modified it to include radio frequency IDs. We will RFID tag all the carts. That will be the means that we'll, um, basically have the database where each cart will be delivered. Again, special collections are identified and, um, we can ask for them as a proposal, but we are not demanding that they are be, they be donated or that they be included as part of this agreement without us asking for them in advance.
Like day of carrying?
Like day of carrying. Um, you know, like appliance pickups, other things like that, leaf and brush collections. Then, okay, city responsibility. This is where the identi, identity of the territory is. The area of collection was the piece that I had, um, highlighted and read in the contracts that the, that everyone had seen, um, that had the, the, uh, each contractor was responsible for their own territory. That piece is now removed. So they, they will be able to, if, um, as, as of today, contract individually with, with the residents, but the residents are going to be required to pay by ordinance the drive-by fee for the hauler in their territory. If they are, um, single, single-family home or a two-unit multiplex. So the territories are defined. Um, Bob Lemire will have all properties north the intersection of Highway 10 and Haven Road, uh, as well as the properties that are north of 13th Avenue, including 1401 Riverview Drive and west of Haven Road. So this is the Riverview Territory. Basically, everything else above Highway 10, uh, in the north end of town and then the Riverview Territory. City Sanitary will have all properties south of Broadway West, south of Broadway East, not in, except for, with the exception of the properties, um, east of Highway 10. This, so anything east of Highway 10 will, will be as part of the O'Tremba disposal territory. They have all of north of Broadway West, all of north of Broadway East and including, not including the territory already defined by Bob Lemire and then all properties east of Highway 10. Finally, the area of collection in this term will not be, uh, changed without consent of the city and the contractors. So then there's the point of the rates, $11 and $14.50. Um, and then we have a system in here of recording complaints and, um, a mechanism for, uh, reprimands of the haulers if we have exceed, if we exceed a threshold of complaints. Now, these are for complaints that are verifiable and it will be the resident's responsibility to, I, you know, prove to us that there was a mistake, either mis-collection or something, um, reprimand, a reprimand, um, to the collection, that the hauler didn't do some, didn't, didn't do their job. Um, and it needs to be, they need to show us that, prove to us in the city that, that, that took place. So we do have the mechanism in here. This has been in the contracts. Um, this is a part of, a new part of this contract, not part of the old contract, but this was not, this has not been, not been argued against by any of the parties. So finally, uh, the attorney piece here in red, uh, in the case of the increase to tipping fees in Morrison County, we shall, um, increase our rates accordingly. That was part, kind of part what we've, we've had in discussions. Built into that $11 and $14.50 is the cost of the weight that the, um, haulers are paying at the landfill. So once, so if today that's $65 a ton, um, next year if it's $75 a ton, that, that assumed average weight piece will, will increase accordingly. It would, it, it won't be a significant amount, um, but it will be guaranteed that it's recouped because if we don't change our rate and the tipping fees go up, then the haulers are, are eating the, the difference. Bit of history on that. First proposal from the city was that we would pay the tipping fees. We have increased some of our insurance, uh, limits on that and... I mean, there's the, the typical language in terms of conflicts and, um, failures to meet the obligations, notices, uh, and then termination, so. Is there any questions, anything else that anybody wants to see? Um, and then finally, another piece, uh, the sale assignments, conveyance, lease or transfer of the agreement. The contractors cannot sell or sign, um, trade, sign, lease, do anything with their territory unless it's approved by the council or approved by the city, so.
And where does it say how long the contract is for?
That was in the dates earlier in the contract, that 2026 December date. But however, we, we started with writing this agreement January 2017, so, or even before that, last year. So, um, it's at this point not a full 10-year contract if that date is, is the same. So this is the, the map of the territory. You can see where the lines get drawn. This was the split of that 13th Avenue. So everything north of that is Bob Lemire. And then, um, there are a few residential homes over here, this Crestview Drive, so that's, uh, O'Tremba disposal. Our, our city limits kind of zigzag, so that's why you see some of these pieces over here that are in and out. Um, everything east of 10, but yet south of that, uh, 371-10 split is O'Tremba. We've redefined the Broadway East. It doesn't, this, I, I do want to be, I do want to clarify on this map. This line, instead of going directly through this city property, it does jog up to 27, then come back down. There, there are not any residential houses in this little section here that we would, that would be collected. That's the Little Falls Care Center. Um, and then I think there's a, uh... Commercial, so. So then you can see everything else south and, um, south and west is City Sanitary. So there are, um, 400, active accounts in May. There are 458 for Bob Lemire. There were 1,163 in that territory for, uh, O'Tremba and there were 1,201 for City Sanitary.
And they are going to be picking up in alleys where it's...
We have talked about that, that there's, there are going to be, you know, dedicated runs for, that will be alley pickups and some that will be street, you know, we'll, we'll work on defining where those, where those work. A lot of the old section of town where you have paved alleys and, you know, straight runs of that, it, it makes sense that you can pick up in the alleys.
So this is for 10 years and then one year of a continuing contract and then for life after that? Or, because it seems like the 10-year is in 10 years, wasn't last time. So is there some stipulation that they don't own these? They don't own these? Because that seems to be, you know, as I keep hearing, I'm giving up and, uh, it seems like our residents have gotten away from us. So I just, you know, I'm concerned about that because the next poor people that have to get into garbage contract negotiations in 10, 11 years, are they going to be going through the same thing? No. You know, that was my, I didn't make enough profit yet. That was my resident. We're not changing it because that's what we went through this time. And is that going to continue to happen or is that up to the legislature to decide?
I would, honestly, to have the definitive answer for that, it would be if we'd add a clause... a clause to the contract, or else it would be defined in the state statute, that once an organized collection contract expires, that there's a, that it's, the city is free to renegotiate or negotiate with whatever parties that they want. I think in terms of the intent, that's a possibility with that contract. I mean, they, they make, it's very well-defined of what you have to do to, in order to organize your collection system. But, once that's in place, I mean, I think you've met the expectations and intent of why cities organize. They're cutting out on the trucks on the road, they're trying to reduce the, you know, come up with pricing mechanism that's reducing the waste, or encouraging recycling programs, you know, whatnot. Whatever went into that decision, it's, there's just, the lack of clarity is on what happens after that, if, you know, if that contract is going to expire. I think, in my opinion, I think in our circumstance, you know, we, you know, we had that, and it was the council's intent that they were going to negotiate with, on new terms, and we had to bring everybody to the table in this, in this way to kind of make, make the, get to that agreement. So, it was, there was, there was a lot more to it than what...
Than what the public sees.
Than what the public sees, yeah.
So, what's the wish of the council?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract as read by John. That's all I'm going to do, make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve the garbage contract. Any further discussion?
A little bit. I first stated that I think a five-year contract's too long. I mean, a 10-year, should move it to five. But, I can also understand, see, the problem is, we didn't have all the information, there was a few people involved in negotiations, so we weren't aware of all the facts. I would have liked to have had that earlier. I probably wouldn't have recommended a five-year contract, I probably would have extended out because there are people that are putting a lot of expenditure into the new pickup, the containers, and they have to be able to recoup that investment. So, I could see why maybe in this instance, a 10-year contract is probably the way to go. I hate saying that, but it's, it just rubs me the wrong way to give such a long extended contract, but they have to, they have to come up with a profit on this. And at the end of five years, somebody, like, one investor might just be breaking even about then. I don't think that's right. I think if they're going to go, come along with us and do the container pickup, we should maybe show a little bit of passion toward them, and probably, this time, give them a 10-year contract.
John, did I miss the, how it was going to escalate as far as charging, other than tip?
Yeah, that's, rates.
Because we had discussed it.
Yeah, we had a CPI, so, changes in the costs, so this will be negotiated between the city and the contractor, not, it's not set by the CPI provisions anymore. So, it will be, at some point in the, in the fall, we'll set that so that it's a resolution, inner fee resolution for the next year, and the rates will only change once per year.
Because part of the discussion we had around the table is, we didn't expect anybody to just come in and lose money.
Rate, sorry. Yeah, rate increases.
At their, correct?
Right.
You know, we wanted to review it and make sure that it was a fair contract, we weren't going to try to sneak something through, and, and if you're showing a loss, we weren't going to say, "Well, that's too bad." It was our plan to take a look at that and renegotiate.
Yeah, so in subsequent, yes. We initially had this in there, you know, because we were talking about a three-year freeze, but then when the cart changes, changed, it was, there's just a lot of unknown, and we're, you know, we're lowering that, that total revenue that the, that the haulers were expected to receive. So, in subsequent years, it is the contractor and the city administrator that will meet to negotiate the fees.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, that was Mayor Zelka?
Yep.
That was, okay.
Can purchase approval?
So, as I was going to propose from the previous meeting before things changed, we do have a proposal for a cart purchase. Let me find it. And I'll have this on here. Based on the information that we're collecting from those, I don't know what we call them surveys, but the registration forms on cart sizes, we found that we had a pretty significant number of 32-gallon carts that came in, almost 1,300. And, however, it was noted that if you did not fill out the form, that you were automatically going to receive a 64-gallon cart. So, our, the best estimates that we can come up with in a recommendation is that we purchase about 1,450 32-gallon carts and 1,564-gallon carts. So, we will, people will have the option to, and 32, 35, I'll make that distinction. The 30, the three gallons is just in the lid. It's the same, it's the same cart, it's not a different, different cart. So, this is with the lid stamp, body stamp, RFID tags added, prices added to it. They will deliver, they will deliver to site, install, and deliver to each individual residence. It's, there's a quote in here for that as well. They just will need a site for about a week with a paved service. I think, based on our discussions, I think we can do that at the city hall parking lot, we have enough, enough room in there. Excess carts will be stored in cities, they are called nestable or stackable, they can fit within one another, so we, we don't need a huge field of all these installed carts. So, once they're, we can, we can keep them in pretty well-contained. So, the total amount on this, with shipping and the installation fees and all the other stampings are $152,931.12. So, the costs of each of these carts within the warranty period is factored in as a, into our monthly admin, admin charge. So, these are, we're recouping the cost of these carts over their lifespan. They are warranted for 12 years, such as, which is one of the longest on the market for a cart like this. I propose the color scheme to be the black granite, it's a black with the little gray specks, and a gray lid. We could do many different colors of lid, but gray seems to be pretty neutral. In the future, this would be also a good mechanism when we have, for the, if we have a mixed, co-mingled curbside recycling program, the cart could be very similar, and we just change the lid color. So, it's, it's something that, that could work for us in other fashions as well. We probably, we would certainly need to buy more carts, but I think it would be, it's a, it's a really good product. They've been on display in city hall for over a month. You know, those are two similar colors to what we have, except for the lids are black. These would be a solid gray lid color.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilmember Liljorin, to approve can, garbage can purchase. Any discussion?
Oh, this is a, also purchased through the NJPA contract, so it is competitively, it meets the competitive bidding requirements on, on that, so.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign. Motion carries. New business, antenna tower relocation, VHS, east side water tower.
Morrison County is looking at building a parking lot on the west side of their, the courthouse of their facility over on Second Street Southeast. As you know, there's a large tower there that they currently have one of their communications antenna on, they are looking at relocating that to our east side water tower. They already have a couple of antennas up there in conjunction with MINDOT for the 800 megahertz system. So, tonight, we are looking at asking the council for approval to have them relocate their antenna to the east side water tower, so that they can construct that parking lot and remove the, the antenna over at the, at the courthouse.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Knopfler, to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign. Motion carries. Call for public hearing, Catholic Health Initiative bond issue through Colorado Health Facilities Finance Authority, Lori?
If you remember, about a year ago, we did the same thing, where we called for a public hearing in which Catholic Health Initiatives or the Colorado Health Facilities, they want to do some refinancing and issue some additional bonds, and in order for them to be tax-exempt bonds, the cities in which they are doing business and using some of the proceeds of the bonding for, need to hold a public hearing so that the public, general public knows that they're spending these dollars in our community, and then it allows them to have tax-exempt abilities for those bonds. So, they have requested, they didn't get the financing completed within the one-year timeframe that they had established from last year, so they are now, once again, asking us to conduct a public hearing on July 3rd for the reissuance, the refinancing of these bonds, and then hopefully, they'll get the financing done within the year's time that they need to. They do reimburse us for the costs of the public hearings, so.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to call for the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve. Any discussion?
We've done this in the past, haven't we?
Yes, several times.
And this is more of a formality than anything else.
Correct.
Okay.
And they've come a long ways since the last time we did, there wasn't much to it at that time, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign. Motion carries. Feasibility study, Trunk Highway 27, Memorial Bridge, BNSF rail crossing, SEH, approve, authorize, Greg?
Tonight, we're asking the council to approve the feasibility study for the Trunk Highway 27 Bridge. As you know, MINDOT's coming through to reconstruct Highway 27 and right around the year 2019. The bridge is going to have a big impact on how that alignment and reconstruction would, would occur. The road and the bridge would obviously be constructed at two separate times, but depending on what the outcome of the feasibility study of the bridge is going to have, would impact what they do on the rest of the street the rest of the way. So, we did apply for a grant from the Initiative Foundation in the amount of $2,500, we're waiting to hear how that, that turns out, but knowing where we're at with construction of the 27 street project, we feel it's important to move forward with the, with the feasibility on the bridge component of it. We do have state aid funds available every year, the city receives funds for our state aid streets from the, from MINDOT, and so we'd be looking at charging this to those, those funds. If recall, in the budgeting process, late 2016 for our 2017 fiscal year, we took the money out because we were going to look for grant funds, we looked for some. The Initiative Foundation is the one that we've targeted right now in terms of being able to get some. So, we are asking the council to approve the 28,635, not to exceed, that would be charged to the project. If we get grant funds, then we would use less of our state aid funds for that, that feasibility. With the, with the state bonding bill that just recently passed, Moorhead, they were slightly higher than us on the rankings in terms of the crude rail by, the crude bi-rail crossings and safeties. We're at number four and number two on those two lists, they were just slightly above us. They got $42 million towards their crossing, and there were two other bridges in that, that bill that got 14 million as well. So, knowing that we are high on those two lists, and that it's a priority to the governor as well as the legislature, I feel that we'll be able to, we'll be able to get some, some construction money once we get this feasibility completed. But, the first step is to get the feasibility completed.
Yeah, there is, in the, in the bonding, there is line items for this, for this program. It's a real grade separation on crude oil rail lines, and that's the list that we've, we've talked about, that we're high-ranking on, not for good reasons. So, the, there are three, three proj, three, three cities that are receiving grants through this bonding, Moorhead being one of them, and, well, Anoka County, the Hanson Boulevard, if you've driven, I think, Highway 10, Long Highway 10 or near Highway 10, and then City of Red Wing is also getting funding. So, there were 12, Anoka County was 12 million, and Red Wing was 14. So, there's, next year is typically a bonding bill year, however, as the way that our state government's not working, every year seems to be a bonding, bonding year. So, having our feasibility study in place and knowing what that, that's going to be is going to be crucial for us in, in receiving the funding from the state to support this
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve the feasibility study. Any discussion?
Yes, if we stick in 28,000-some dollars, would that kind of deter from getting our chances, or limit our chances for receiving grant money?
No, this is only an approved...
Consider that, would they?
No, I mean, it, I don't know if our investment in this feasibility study is going to be reimbursable as any part of this grant, but we're talking $28,000 to help get us 10 to 20 million dollars from state, and we're going to need a feasibility study and need to, and look at all of our, you know, alternatives for this project in order to make a compelling argument to the state to include us in a bonding, in a bonding bill. So, these, you know, these are, these are grant funds, and as MINDOT's told us with the 27 project, anything that we do in terms of changing, improving, making improvements to that bridge are at our cost, or we have to come up with the funds. So, we, we need this action to help us secure these funds.
Any other discussion?
Well, I, I know we've talked about this before, and, but I can't remember what the answer was. It had been done before in the past, right?
Not for 27, there was one that was for Seventh Avenue over here, there was a, excuse me, Ninth Avenue, that was for a feasibility study going up over Paul Larson Drive, but nothing for Broadway.
I thought that...
I thought we had one for Broadway.
You were talking about all the businesses over there would have to go to make it work, and...
Same, the church, too.
There was something in place that we went through in the past discussing, you'd have to contact our old community.
I know MINDOT did a preliminary look at it, but not a feasibility, not a complete feasibility on it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's MINDOT's, MINDOT's run, their version of how they would, they would do it, a feasibility study will give us the, multiple options, you know, I think they call them the alternatives for the project, that are incorporating everything beyond just the cost of the bridge, it's going to be the cost of moving the businesses, or relocating buildings, or all of those, those factors that are going to go into place to come up with the best, best plan for our community, so.
And that includes finding the money for it, right? The feasibility includes...
They will identify potential sources, so it's not going to be able to say, you're going to get X number from the bonding bill, it'll say, the bonding bill is a source that you can go to for grant funds.
Right.
So, in other words, if we chose just to not try to go over the track, just let MINDOT do their thing, we have enough stuff in place, just to leave it alone right now, but if our desire is to actually change the whole construction of what's going to happen...
Yeah, if, if we want to separate the rail from the roadway, we're going to need this, and otherwise, MINDOT's plan is fix, fix the road, fix the bridge.
R and R, remove and replace, that's all they're going to do.
Keep everything the same. Yep.
I think if you talk to anyone on the west side who are willing to put a bridge over it because they're tired of, especially lately, it's been pretty bad. But, then on the other hand, if you try to go through the cities at any given time in any area, you're going to run into more of a backup traffic situation than we'll ever get in this town, so.
But, you know, I thought when Sauk Rapids started theirs, I thought they were crazy, and now I see what it's done and how vibrant that's become around there, and how they got another high-rise apartment building going up there. I think it's really benefited that entire area, and brought a lot more businesses and I think it's really benefited that entire area, and brought a lot more businesses and people to the downtown.
Plus, the safety issue, he's talking about, we're ranked two and four.
Right.
And it's not going to get better.
Correct.
So maybe now is the time
The ranking on those lists is what would
And now they're more, and Morehead's going to do something.
Yes.
And they're one.
Yeah.
And we're two.
And we're two.
We're going to be number one shortly.
Shortly.
Yeah.
One other question, is there a reason SEH was cherry-picked out of this one, too? I didn't see no quotes, no bids, no, nothing, it just
Knowing that they did the Stock Rapids one, they know the, they know the route that they have to take to get funds for that, and what works for, for that revitalization, that's why they were selected to give us a price on that.
So what, where is our cutoff as far as request for quotes versus just going out and asking or putting it out for bids or
Professional services, we don't have one, it's, you select the best qualified candidate for that. So engineering services such as this, there isn't a limit on that amount.
Something like this, you put it out to bids, take the low bid, you might get the wrong person doing it.
It's true.
Well, that's why it's worded right, responsible bid.
And we have the money to do it.
We have money in our stated account to do it, yes.
Money that we could use to repair roads instead of this, too, so it's not just money laying around with no purpose, it's money that can be used, so. Just, I don't want to get our hands tied, it seems like a lot of stuff is just getting cherry-picked and handed out to wherever we need, feel necessary, and Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apolo, same sign, motion carries. Petition, stop sign, installation, receive.
Just to receive it tonight, that's all we're looking at.
Have a motion to receive?
So moved.
We just need one for, to receive, right? Okay.
Oh, okay. No, that's actually a vote.
It's not introduced, you do one?
It's not introduced, it's a vote.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apolo, same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2017-41, master partnership contract, State of Minnesota, Department of Transportation.
This is the master partnership contract with the State of Minnesota, we've had these for quite some time here. It allows MINDOT to do work for the city and the city to do work for MINDOT and get reimbursed both directions. It's very similar to what we've done in the, in the past, it's just that the other one expires here at the end of the year, I believe it is, and so we're looking at renewing that. They send that out to all the municipalities, so it's not anything different than you'd see in any other community, but they do need that signed and sent back to them in order for us to do any work for them or them to do any work for us.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2017-41?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-41.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Gushak, to approve Resolution 2017-41. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call the roll, please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Any announcements, her reports? Announcement, Funding Commission, public hearing, conditional use permit, Aldi Inc. on June 12th, next Monday night, 6:30. 9:01, we will adjourn.